Please for the citizens. We are grateful for the moisture we've received and please bless us. Uh, the temperatures began to warm that the that things will go smoothly, that we can make the necessary preparations to avoid any flooding or disasters. Again, we're grateful for thy abundance and this we pray in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Take a motion to adopt the agenda?
Actually, I'd like to
Okay.
Um, request that we move discussion number eight up above the others. I know that I see quite a few people here that I know are here for that. Is that something I can?
Uh, would it be okay if we move it after item three approval of minutes?
Yes.
I'd second that if we need it.
Okay. So can I get a motion to?
I move that we adopt the agenda with.
Move to item nine.
Sorry, what's that? Eight, yep. Moving item eight
Eight.
to the place under third place.
Okay.
To three point five.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, uh, next item on our agenda tonight is public comment. This is an opportunity for citizens to bring their concerns forward or to comment on something that may not have a public hearing tonight. Um, I do see folks that have been at our recent planning commission and I will note that uh, there is not a rezone uh, on our agenda tonight, so we will not be addressing that. You're free to come another time, but uh, or you're free to comment now, but we're not addressing that tonight. Okay, so I'll take a public comment and please keep your comments to three minutes and give us your name and address before you begin.
Hi, my name is Christie Randall. I live at eight six nine west twenty seven hundred south in Syracuse. Um, regarding the subject of noise enforcement, it's a quality of life issue. When an agency begins receiving noise complaints, often from a single complaint and complainant, it's very easy to classify that as classify the individual as overly sensitive or even a chronic complainer. But the problem goes much deeper than that. There are physical and psychological effects of noise on individuals. Sleep deprivation can have devastating effects on people. I could not imagine new parents finally getting their newborn to sleep and then hearing loud machines working outside, waking up the baby. Their, the parents' hope of sleep quickly fading away. Or students unable to sleep, but expected to be awake to participate in classroom discussions the next day. Tired workers driving on busy streets or the highway, struggling to stay awake, hoping not to get in an accident and then working over eight hours, having to be alert at their job and then driving home again. Those that battle insomnia need to have consistency in their nightly routine, otherwise the ability to sleep escapes them until the next night. How many nights can people operate due to lack of sleep? And this exception is being requested for snow seasons. When the beep 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 of the snowplows kept a family awake, one of our neighbors found a solution. Um, questioning OSHA and then approaching the company with the information. They did make changes to a few of their machines. I'm uncertain if they did it to all of them. Now, when backing up, the snowplows make a whoosh sound instead of the beeping noise. But we don't know if it's all of them or if they still have the beep 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 going on. So my question to you guys is, why is it the responsibility of the residents to find solutions instead of the companies or the city in Syracuse City? Where's the accountability? Do the rights of the individuals to not have their lives interfered by noise take precedence over other individuals' rights to conduct business for profit? How many companies in Syracuse are requesting the noise exception for loading operations and necessary preparations of snowplows? Is the exception requested for the night hours or of operation or the noise decibels or both? Has testing been conducted for the sound levels and exposure durations of the night operations and snowplows at the property lines? Unless it has changed, Clearfield City's snowplows prepare for their operations over at the Freeport Center away from residential areas. What alternatives can this Syracuse City do to aid the companies? Could the snowplows and the equipment be moved to another area of operation during the winter season to conduct their business and allow the residents to maintain a peaceful and quiet night? Commercial businesses?
Your time is expired.
Okay, thank you.
Wayne Volk, twenty seven eighty-three South one thousand West here in Syracuse. First thing I'd like to address is, you know, when the city's snowplows and stuff, they're, they're taking care of the city. But there's times when the business next to me, uh, sometimes we get no snow here and late and gets fives. They're doing preparation and we don't even have snow and they a couple of Sundays ago, they woke me up before six o'clock and we had no snow. Uh, I want to describe to you what the preparation is a little bit at our house. So it's a construction zone. We have front end loaders, loading sand, banging the truck beds, uh, making noise all night long. And I've got it on my phone. It sounds like a rifle going off. I'm not going to play it. But our bedroom is a hundred and seventy-five feet away from them. And there's times at night they have their engines running, just idling. And I'm not exaggerating. You can reach up and touch our windows and feel it. And if I make it sound like it's bad, it's worse. I want, want you to know that this rain has really helped us because there's no snow and we don't have anything going on at night. I want to give you a little history about Kay. She's had four bypass, major heart attack, with blood clots. And Marilyn Savage, Jordan's mom was an angel and we got her home out of the hospital. Your emails and calls and texts to reassure us what's going to happen, we appreciate. Kay's a great wife, mother of six, grandmother, great grandmother. She serves her family, her church, and she served six years right where you're sitting. And she deserves better. I want you to know, I'm in trouble for this. But in the last twenty-eight days since this started, two times I was going to take her to the emergency. We've got twenty-eight days more. And I don't know if she'll last.
My name is Jennifer Ralphs and I live at nine four six west twenty-eight hundred south in Syracuse. Thank you, Mayor and Council for offering us this time for public input. When I saw the agenda item regarding noise authored by Bree Brass, the city attorney, I knew I had to come here and speak. The top bullet points on Mrs. Brass's explanation and possible exemption dealt with complaints of citizens. And yes, I am one of those citizens. I have lived here for over fifty years and I have never complained, not once until recently. May I share with you one single night out of many that occurred, often in the wee hours of the morning and throughout the entire night? This is what we are asked to deal with coming from a nearby commercial business who also includes snow removal services. I was abruptly awakened by the crashing and banging sounds of the heavy duty equipment being used. This one was at four forty-five AM. Will you make sure that the volume is up as you start my video? Know that I was also wearing earplugs trying to sleep as I had done numerous other times prior to prior and times afterwards when the commercial business started their snow removal preparations. Being pressed for time, I can only show you one minute, twelve seconds. Trust me, this went on much, much longer. Other times like this occurred not only once, but twice, even three times in a single night. Please play the video. Thank you, Cassie.
It's four forty-five in the morning. Can you turn up the volume?
The volume was much louder last, last week. Um, let me ask you this. Would any of you like this noise a hundred and sixty feet away from your bedroom window? If the suggestion offered by the staff is adopted, this would give the business or any business the right to carry on every time it snowed in the most harmful way, robbing neighbor after neighbor of sleep. And could this exemption be year round? A business of this type often start the beeping and crashing bed trucks early in the morning, then should be allowed. In conclusion, if my son starts a small commercial business teaching drums and decides to expand and start up a rock band and needs to prepare from eleven PM to three AM five days a week, will adopting this exemption, this waiver for noise creating commercial businesses allow him and others the same privilege regardless of the havoc there to their neighbors? Please do not allow this exemption for any business to destroy the sleep and peace of the residential neighbors. Thank you.
My name is Kay Volk. I live at twenty-seven eighty-three South one thousand West and I am still alive. I'm thankful for that. I did not know my husband was going to go into that and um, I'm gonna tell you, I worried about him too. He's diabetic. His numbers have gone off the chart. Um, I don't know if you like sleep. I don't know if you think it's an important part of your life, but I think second to maybe water and food. Sleep and rest is one of the most essential. The unintended consequence, unintended consequences, I believe here are simply a business that thought they could expand. They're in a, they're in a, in a commercial zone and they're acting every bit industrial. They're carrying out twenty-four seven snow removal. And it has impacted us this year more than ever. And I'm, I'm thinking, and I don't know, we've not had dialogue with them. But it is, that video that they played is nothing compared to what it is. I want you to think of a fifth, five ton maybe bed of the truck just being slammed down. And the hum of the motors and the back hose coming in and loading up their, their product over through the night, not once, as Jennifer said, but sometimes three times in a night, you do not sleep. And within two days in a row like that, you realize all of that sleep deprivation is setting in on you. Yes, physical, but it's also emotional and mental. Depression starts. In fact, I read most recently that one of the most highest sleep deprived countries is, I believe it was Taiwan. And it's also the highest suicide rate. There has got to be a connection. I'm sorry for them that they decided that this is something that they could do in the middle of the night as a commercial business and deprive people of their sleep. But please, if you go and you decide that they cannot, please make it very clear that there is no preparation between seven o'clock in the morning, uh, excuse me, between ten o'clock at night and seven o'clock in the morning. And between then, it should be as quiet as a tomb. Thank you very much for allowing us to speak. Thank you.
Is there any other public comment?
My name's Jeremy Bingham, nine thirty-six, Seann Andrews Drive. I'm the owner of Earthworks Landscaping. I too haven't had much sleep in the last thirty days. I'm stressed out about this. I'm not a public speaker. I don't like conflict. Um, the snow removal issue is an important one to me. I don't think it's between Earthworks and the neighbors. I think it's a city issue that we got to clear up. Um, reading the code, I interpret it as I'm legal to do what I'm doing. If I had a vote on how it should state, I would put it as noise resulting from the preparation from snow sorry, from the preparation for snow removal equipment and other snow removal activities. I understand the noise. Us as a business, we have our plows ready. We have our ice melt loaded, trucks ready. We can't load salt before it snows. It'll freeze. We can't get it out. So we have to load salt and then we take off. We try to minimize our noise. We have one skid. We don't have all this equipment at the yard loading, making different noises. We have one piece of equipment loading all of our salt trucks. I think snow removal is a twenty-four seven operation. It's a necessity. They say that they, there should be no noise till seven AM. Then what happens with all the businesses that we take care of, the Walmarts, the the Tanner Clinics, the retail buildings, the hospitals, daycares, preschools. Our job is to get up in the middle of the night and get those open, safe for business for the public. And if we can't operate till seven AM, that really does no good for snow removal at that point, just like the city, they have to go when they have to go. We have to go when we have to go. Um, so I hope that you guys will amend it at least so people can understand it one way or another. To me, I read it my way. They're going to read it their way. We need to make it so everyone can understand it and there's no gray area. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Connie Wicker, twenty-seven ninety South one thousand West and um, I just want you to know that it is very loud. We live right there. And this should be moved to an industrial place if they're going to continue to choose to do industrial work. Like I said in our last meeting, we had a, a construction business, my husband and I, and we did not house our equipment in our neighborhood yard. We housed it in industrial park. We sought out and looked for an industrial place to house the the large equipment, the large boulders, all the things that they're carrying for themselves. Um, maybe they've outgrown the lot and they need to look for a different place. I don't believe that last time he said there was thirty-eight employees. I believe that it's going to grow. And when that grows, then the, the noise is going to grow and the parking is going to grow and everything is going to grow. So the noise is horrible. Ten thirty at night, the other night, we jumped up out of bed to see what was going on and there was like ten cars waiting for one of their trucks to back in, making the beeping sounds, which we understand they make because they have to be safe. But at the same time, it stopped ten to fifteen cars and they had to wait for them to back in and it's ten thirty-five at night. It just took forever. And not only that, but just even today, the noise of the, of just the company is too much for a residential area. So please really check into it and make sure that you understand. And if you don't believe it, come over and sit and watch and listen. Don't just sit here, but actually understand what it goes, what goes on. We're not trying to put him down. He's a great guy. He has a good business. I'm proud of him for doing it because we need him, but put his business in industrial park. Don't make it an industrial area in a residential school, church. Um, so, thank you.
Last call. Okay, we'll close public comment.
Here, we did just have one emailed comment.
Okay, if you'd read that.
Yes, this is from Carla Robinette. She says, I'm unable to attend the meeting due to a commitment tonight with my youth organization, but wanted to go on record. In February of this year, I sent each of you an email regarding a request for rezoning on the corner of twenty-seven hundred south and one thousand west. I, along with many residents throughout the city, thank you for holding to the integrity of our current city's general plan and voting to maintain the current R two zoning in this area. My comments tonight are in regard to agenda item number eight. In the factual summation of this item, city staff is requesting clarification on our city's noise ordinance. Specifically, this summation identifies the city's municipal code section six point four oh point oh six oh. Exemptions subsection C, noise resulting from the snowplows engaged in snow removal activities. And subsection E, no, noise resulting from operations at a city public works facility related to necessary preparation of construction materials, snow removal equipment, or other critical functions. In reading the city's ordinance code section six point four oh noise, it is apparent the intent of the subsections in question are in regard to city snowplows and snow removal, not commercial or private snow removal. Snow removal is part of a city's infrastructure. Snowplows pass most of our homes a few nights throughout the winter months, but are not warming up their engines, loading, et cetera, in one residential location. I asked the council to reword the subsections in question to restate the current regulations as written in section six point four oh point oh three oh sub C, which prohibits the loading, unloading, opening, or otherwise handling of crates, containers, garbage containers, or other objects. If loading operations are greater than two hundred feet from a residential use, then loading may begin at six AM. If the council changes this ordinance to allow noise from such businesses to begin earlier or run all night, I believe this will be an open invitation for businesses throughout the city to make similar requests. The key words in this situation are public works versus commercial businesses. Add this to the area currently in question is zoned as R two residential. As the council considers the city's staff request for direction on this issue, I ask the council to maintain the current intent of our city's noise ordinance and to add wording to the subsections in question to uphold its current intent, which I believe is to keep noise to a minimum in the residential areas of our great city. Thank you.
Okay. Well, I will move us on to item number three, approval of minutes. We have two sets of minutes for your approval. Any questions? Take a motion?
I move that we approve the minutes of February fourteenth, twenty twenty-three business meeting and February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three work session.
Okay.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimous. We'll now move down to item number eight, which is discussion and or potential action of proposed ordinance twenty twenty-three dash six regarding amendments to Syracuse City Municipal Code Section six point four dot sixty related to exemptions for snow removal activity. Now, as we begin this, let me say a couple of things. This is not on the agenda because of a uh, business request or a citizen request. This is actually my request and it's because internally staff was unsure of how this reads. There were multiple multiple decisions on how this code was to be interpreted. The only way to solve that is for us to clear it up. So I asked that we do this and I asked that we do this in one meeting because we are in the middle of a snow season. So whatever we come up with, uh, needs to be acted on promptly. Now, I will also say that this is absolutely has nothing to do with one business. This is how we interpret the noise code across the city entirely. And I'd prefer that we respond according to what fits the entire city, not what fits one lot. Um, and I will open this for discussion and um, who'd like to lead on?
I get irritated with barking dogs and loud noises and I like my sleep. That's my response to that.
So we didn't even have a noise code. Uh, for those of you who are
Citizenly, I mean, we're still a city and we attract businesses because we have citizens that live here. First and foremost, we have citizens that live here. They need to be able to live peacefully.
I think we have a, a couple of issues that need to be addressed. One is what preparation is and where it's allowed. Um, depending on, and if this is specific to a noise level regulation, we've got that as an exemption, but but it's unclear what preparation would be. Preparation of starting up your snow blower is one thing and it's not ongoing directed in one in one vicinity. Whereas this particularly preparation in general, if it's a business and it's, it's standardized and it's in the same place, then you're affecting the same people over and over. And so I think that's one issue. And then the second is the timeline of when that's appropriate. And we also have a two hundred feet from residential. Um, and that, that's a regulation that we should be looking at as well. So I think, I think that we have a few different issues and we may, we may have to address them all individually and rewrite some ordinance here.
Can we get Bree's interpretation of this so we can kind of clarify for everybody in the audience and sorry, can I ask one?
Yes.
In regard to that. So if we've got any commercial zone, what, what in our code, what are the allowable hours of operation? Do we have anything that states that? Because these are exemptions. But do we have any code that states like, okay?
Well, let me
I mean, this hour and this hour, you
Yeah, I don't
Pretty much any
I don't think so. I get that. I think Noah's looking that up for us right now from, uh, but let me just say this that um, we are specifically talking about snow removal because when this code came about, there were lots of noises about barking dogs and complaints. That was there. Where were also complaints about loud music. That was a, a ongoing complaint. And what was brought up was that our snowplows roll in the middle of the night because it is weather contingent. And so I don't know. This is, there is a mixed decision or discussion about whether our plows are any different than other plows. Um, I, I think it is a question that if there's any unclarity of whether your neighbor can turn on his snow blower outside of the normal hours because of accumulation of snow, we have to resolve that. We have to understand what that means and what limitations we place.
Ask a question.
Yeah.
Mr. Robert, can I ask you a question, sir? If, yeah, yeah, yep, yep. You're a public guard. Come on up. Got a question for you, a couple of them, actually.
Okay.
Over our snowplows, I've got questions.
Okay.
When do you guys load the salt for your snowplows when you're expecting a storm? Like, what's the timeframe there? The timeline of it? When you get all locked and loaded, ready to go?
That would be one of the first things we do in the morning. Oftentimes we're up about four AM or um, sometimes earlier. Uh, getting the plows out and ready. First thing we do is load salt in the back of the salt spreaders. Um, it takes, are you asking how much time?
Yep.
Yeah.
Process.
Hey, for the large trucks, it takes about I don't know, ten minutes, but to scoop the salt and load it into the truck. But it does take some time to get people out there into the loaders and into the trucks to move them into place, so.
I've got another question. Would you like to live next door to that?
If it was already there.
Hypothetically. I'm not gonna put you on the spot.
Yeah, that's kind of a you're kind of putting it
Yeah, no, that's all.
All right. So let me, if I may, let's go back to, there was a question for Bree of the, what she believes the interpretation of this is. And honestly, this is why this was brought forward because there were multiple interpretations, but go ahead.
Um, so in interpreting the code as it's currently written, I don't believe that um, a private or commercial business would be exempted from the noise ordinance as it's currently written. I don't believe preparation for snow removal is within the language. And I believe that the active snow removal would be them driving down the road, removing snow actively. And our public works does have an exemption under that same ordinance section that allows for the preparation. And so I read that whole code in its totality and I don't see that a private commercial snow removal business is exempted from the noise ordinance. And we do have commercial business hours for noise ordinance and it's um, seven AM unless it's two hundred feet away from a residential area and that, in that case, it's six AM.
Okay.
I think that's a lot of clarity there. Thank
That's it. Thank you.
But I think the question that I'm trying to get at is that other people read it differently, so we need to be clear. We, we need to tighten up the language. If that's the interpretation you want, we need to change the language to make sure that's absolutely clear. If it's not the language you want, then we need to clear that up as well. I'm just, that's my point is
What other attorneys told us our legal information was? Didn't read.
Well, there was previous discussion before this current attorney. That we would allow businesses to prep for snow removal.
But it doesn't read like that, correct?
So. We have a fundamental issue here. Some of these private businesses serve other businesses that need to be open and some of them serve public walkways and public. Streets that we need to, could be concerned about.
But I do think.
Limiting their ability to make those places safe to open.
But I think then you're getting into a profit, uh.
Yep.
Profit business versus a public works facility that's taxpayer and, and serves the residents in a different way. One is funded by taxpayers, whether they want it to be or not, and another is a private entity. So I, I think that we, and, and also I think there's a something to keep in mind and that's our public works is, is industrial. Right? I mean, that's. It's an industrial area. They're working with trucks and trailers and dumps and, and they aren't next to residents. And so.
Town bowls around.
Um, I think.
Aren't they right next to, I mean, they're right across the street from residential now.
From Stillwater or from.
Yeah, but those are, they just built.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm.
First, right? So, so what we're dealing with here too is, is. Uh, that we have residents who, who were here before a company. That now it, you know, within the last couple of years, it used to be a plumbing business and now it's an, even though it's, it is zoned commercial. And it allows that, it does not allow industrial. And so I think the noise ordinances that we're dealing with should go across the board. Um, everywhere, you know, my backyard, your backyard, across the street, whatever, two hundred feet. Is what we're talking about and seven AM if you're not.
Can I ask another question? Does, does in dust, do those areas zoned industrial then? Have a wider range of, uh, is there a?
There's only one part of our city that's zoned industrial and it's up on one ninety-three and one thousand. It's that corner where warehouse twenty-two is. Okay. Outside of that, no spot in our city is currently zoned industrial and we would have to make that change. And that's not on the.
Well, no, I'm not.
They do have different guidelines in industry.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just looking if, if a, if a business needs to operate. You know, outside of a commercial zone hours, then what would an industrial allow? What, what does the city allow in industrials? Do we have?
They have different hours. They have a different uh, decibel level that they can.
According to the noise code.
So, but there.
Yeah, we, we differentiate between the decibel levels at that point.
And that's because of the surrounding areas. Yes.
Isn't it the same hours?
No, they have an added hour.
Added hour.
Okay, Jordan's asked to, you recognized?
Thanks.
You've been so patient.
I, I try. You guys have important things to say too. Um, the one thing I do want to make sure that, um, however this goes. I, I do believe that we need to allow for all snow plows to operate. That I'm saying operate in the city regardless of the hour. And my reasoning for that is we need schools to open, we need um, stores to open, we need hospitals to open. And so I do want to, however this plays out, I want to make sure that both public safety. And public uh, education or private education, whatever it may be, that there has to be an opportunity for snow removal to happen and it can't all be the city.
Yeah.
And that's just not feasible. So um, whether we go with preparation or not. Um, I do believe that there needs to be an exemption for both private and uh, public snow plows to operate in our roadways. Whenever snow is falling.
To be.
We all agree on that.
To be, I don't know if we can, but to be clear that um. Public, our, our public works only clears roads and they clear them in a priority. So they don't even get to all roads by the time people are on them. So without these other services in our city somehow. It wouldn't be safe to go to the clinic, to school, to uh, you know, some of these important necessities. I'm not saying that everybody has to grocery shop, but if you have to go to a doctor and you can't clear the doctor's parking lot. Can they even be open? And, and right now, that's not allowed if we have the current interpretation.
That, that's where I'm going. At a minimum, I want to make sure that snowplows can operate on our roadways. Whether they're publicly or privately owned.
So operation versus preparation.
I, I'm just talking operation right now.
Okay.
For start.
I want, I just wanted to set a ground rule here.
I mean, I, I would generally agree that yes, uh, we, we need to allow both public and private. Operation of snow plows. I think we need an exemption for.
And we, we do currently have.
Okay.
That exemption is for snow removal activity. So. The, them out on the roadways or uh, in the parking lots clearing the snow, I would interpret that as snow removal activity.
Do, do we need to clarify?
I think we need to clarify that because some people are suggesting that. The way they read it in our code, I mean, we heard tonight, some people say that that's not allowed in their vision of the wording. So I'm saying we clarify that wording.
If, if council would like to clarify, I would currently interpret snow removal engaged in snow removal activity as. Them driving along the roadway, removing snow.
Okay.
Does that also apply to snow blowers if I need to get up at three in the morning and start my snow blower?
We have a separate ordinance that um, allows for private and um, homeowner, homeowners to begin snow removal at five AM.
Okay.
So no, not free.
I, I just, good to ask the question.
So we're fine to have our neighbors do a clearing and. Pump it up and get going at five AM. So at this point, we're talking about exemptions for preparation. Before seven AM because we're talking about a commercial zone, which is a seven AM. Okay.
Correct.
Okay, so do we need to change the wording to clarify? That we allow private and public operation of snow clearing?
Doesn't sound like it.
It doesn't sound like that's clear to me.
No, I thought she said.
So define operation, basically. It is, the operation needs a definition.
I think it's being challenged because that's what we've heard from some emails or saying.
I mean, could it just?
That's what it says, so.
So I think we could clarify with just saying active removal with the exemption or not including the preparation to. You know, execute this effort or whatever. And then it would cover if that's.
Or we, or we have a separate line that says preparation of snow removal or preparation of any businesses. Proceeding to snow, snow removal still maintain the seven AM. And it may be that, that they would need to look for a place to facilitate the loading and the preparation in an industrial zone. But, but basically we don't include that part. We would just need to state, we, we maintain that snow preparation cannot begin. With noise, you know, with a certain amount of noise level anytime before seven AM. I mean, we're just reiterating what our policy is, right? Isn't that basically what we're saying? We've already got requirements in there that say. Commercial use is seven AM and to ten. And so anything in those interim hours, they need to be clarified that preparation does not exclude them from those same restrictions.
Yeah, we're just really trying to decide right now whether preparation. And I'm, I'm guessing six AM doesn't, doesn't improve anything.
Look, I, I'm not, you know, this is for you guys to decide, but my goal is that when we finish here tonight, there's absolutely clear.
I mean.
What we're allowing and what we don't allow.
I, I mean. Uh, at least from the public comment from earthworks. If you allow an exemption for them to remove. For a private business to remove, to engage in snow removal activities, but don't have any exemption for. Preparation, then it's almost moot.
You know, they, they could, it just would have to occur in an.
In a different.
An industrial sound.
Yeah, so.
Which.
Yeah, I mean, I guess that's the.
I mean, on, on one hand, I, I absolutely agree that we need snow removal and salt is a necessary part of that. But on the other hand, my heart goes out to everyone that has to be right next to it. So I, I'm kind of at a mix. I'm at a loss. Is there a way to somehow load this inside a warehouse where it's perhaps muffled or something like that? And have a pull through or something. But as it is, I, I don't think this is a sustainable. Action to, to ask all the neighbors to. Just deal with it. I agree.
I agree. And I think that what we're dealing with here is, is just a probably a relocation effort. But if we're talking about this as an. Across the boards, because I know we keep going back to, we say it's not about a certain business. But right now that's what's before us and that's what we've been hearing from people and, and so we, we are. Discussing it with that as a catalyst, but eventually comes back to as a city as a whole. Um, it, that could become. A, a quality of life everywhere.
Cause we could have other commercials, snowplow companies come in near resident, you know?
And it would be the same ordering, right? So they could, they could be closer than those two hundred feet and they could start the same thing and then it would be anywhere. So I think what we're. My feeling here is that this needs to be. Uh, maybe more particularly laid out and articulated in the regulations in this ordinance and zoning here. Um, and, but it's still, it needs to be with the residents in mind. Commercial is different than industrial. Noise pollution is very real, which is why we have an entire. Ordinance about it and we have a lot of, uh, that's one of, you know, that's a lot of complaints in the city that we get for decibel. You know, exemptions here. So it is an issue. It is a quality of life issue. And I think what we need to keep in mind is this could be anywhere. I could have somebody behind me say, well, I'm, you know what? I started this business. And this is what we have turned it into. You may have been here longer and your bedroom window may not be able to be opened ever again because we start. Our trucks up at this time of, of morning or in the middle of the night. Uh, depending on the need of what our customers are, and I understand customers are important to businesses, but that's why we have certain zones.
Yeah, I mean, we, we love the fact here in the city. We love the services. That we, we get from all the different entities we have. We, we, we love business in Syracuse. But at the same time, there are zones for a reason. And I, I get it. If there's any way we can somehow reduce the decibel level to acceptable limits. Then let's do it. I, I don't want to tell anyone to leave. Uh, cause again, I think this is fantastic.
Okay, so let's focus on the ordinance.
Yep.
Do we need where, or is there wording that will make it clear? It sounds to me, and correct me if I'm wrong. That the council is agreeing that. Uh, a truck removing snow from a surface is acceptable.
Yes.
At any time.
Yeah.
Okay. Do we need it to be specific that way? Uh, and then it sounds to me. Like what you're saying is you don't agree that you can load and prep trucks to make that, to do that work.
So it would be like any snow plow and the continuous motion of removing snow is allowed at any time. Excluding preparation for said snow removal.
I think, I think what we're saying is if it's not actively removing snow. That other activities related to snow removal would not be.
That's what I just said, yeah.
I mean, I'm, I'm allowing them to back up and, you know, and.
We have to let it.
Well, because they just drive by. When you're just plowing snow, you're just driving by. Your sound is like thirty seconds, maybe. It's not continuous all night long or just five hours during your REM sleep, you know, it's.
Well, have neighbors with a blade on their truck and if they want to plow the cul-de-sac because it's last to get to.
Does it take five, three, four hours like it would to pre, for preparation?
Whatever it takes.
I welcome that. I welcome their plow on the.
Yeah. Okay, so.
Just out of curiosity, and I'm gonna slightly expand the scope. Do we need to put in a similar thing for mosquito abatement? Those trucks are not.
Oh.
Yeah, but that's a continuous motion.
That's not on, that's not.
Pair in Kaysville.
That, that's not on the agenda tonight. So.
Okay.
We can put that on a future one if you'd like.
Nah, I mean.
Do you really want to fight mosquitoes? More of them?
No, no, I, I, I want them to be able to drive by my house is what I'm saying. I hate mosquitoes. I wish they'd all die.
All right, we're talking about snow removal and I gotta keep it there. I'm sorry, folks. So, all right, so Bree. Um, it sounds like we want language that will clearly say that if you're. Operating a vehicle that moves snow from a surface, that's legal at any time for anybody. And that if you are doing other things that relate to that, that would be outside of the scope of the ordinance. Can you suggest or can anybody, or do we need to come back to a future meeting to create language that is that?
Or is any change necessary?
I, I feel like our current ordinance is, that's how I would interpret it. I wouldn't recommend changing it if. That's how you'd like it interpreted, but if you do want clarifying language. I'm happy to propose some.
Well.
I was just proposing if you felt differently than what I was interpreting, then maybe we do need some clarifying.
That's my suggestion is that there are people who have said that that's not the way they read it. And so, and that's not just me. That's, you know, we've heard from emails that people say my vision of this is that it doesn't mean this.
Yeah.
Well, then it has to be clear.
And I, I think if we said this does not include snow removal preparation.
I, I can, um, we can just in that um, same subsection C, we can just. Put noise resulting from snow plows engaged in snow removal activities. Um, semicolon, snow remote, snow removal activities do not include, include loading or preparation of snow plow equipment.
Except when in, in an applicable zone. I mean.
Yeah.
We're, we're, we're perfectly okay with it.
Let's cover by that section.
I'm just saying, I don't need you to talk about that because that's, I don't, I don't want it to make it sound like you can't do that in our city.
Unless it's in an industrial zone.
Right, approved zone. That sounds good, Ms. Bree.
Yeah, I don't want to add stuff that makes people think they can't put salt in there if they're in an approved zone.
Okay, so. We just had suggested language to clarify this so that there's not contention over what it means and what it doesn't mean. Can I get somebody to make a motion that we make that change to allow that language to be altered?
I move that we alter our current ordinance noise regulation. Level regulation ordinance, municipal code, code section six point four zero point zero six zero. To include an exemption. Nope. How are we going to state that? To include that the noise regulation exemptions do not include snow removal preparation or anything like unto it. According to whatever you want to write, Bree.
I feel like, I, I don't know. Is this like, so the way we're doing this right now for this vote, I feel like it should be left the way it is. And I think there's, I move that we leave it the way it is.
Because if our, if our. If, if our attorney counsel is that.
Is interpreting it as that's how it's. I trust her.
We now have direction, correct?
That's what I'm suggesting to you. Uh, that's fine. You can vote that way and I'm not gonna say you can't.
But you're saying it's confusing.
What I'm saying is there have been people who've called code enforcement and said. We think that this is breaking the rules because they are doing exactly what we just said is legal. So that means that we were continually have to educate the people who call and complain. That that is allowed within the code. So my suggestion is. That we clarify it to the point where we don't get those calls regularly. That says, my neighbor woke up at five and ran the snow blower and I want to sleep till eight and that's not fair.
But neighbors can at five, right, Ms. Bree?
Neighbors can, but this is a different code. I, I think the clarity is important. We're seeing right here that we have two dis, different discrepancies. It, or discrepancies in, and understandings in what the code actually says. So they believe they've been operating under current.
Then I think we, I think we need, I think, I think rather than just take us, I, I know it extends it, but then we need, we need.
We need to come back to another meeting.
Put an article.
Clarifying language.
Can we put an article in the magazine that says plowing snow qualifies as a snow removal activity?
You can?
Yeah, cause I mean, I, I still feel like if, if we have gotten direction that this is how it is interpreted. I mean, that's, that's their job is to interpret the rule. And when folks come in and I, I just worry that no matter how you wordsmith it, whatever you add, there'll still be people asking, well, what about this exemption? And that's continually their job is to provide feedback and, and the code enforcement's there to be an expert in the community and, and see attorney feedback and.
And the attorney is right. You're saying that just leave it the way it is and don't exempt this, the preparation. Is it clear enough then that preparation is not included in the noise reg, noise regulation?
Have you read? I mean, I guess, I guess as an elected city official, I read these ordinances all the time. And I'm confused all the time and I still have to reach out to Bree and ask her for support on, you know, understanding it. And so I don't know that we can add any level of clarification. We would have. You know, a code that would be ten million pages long if we had to clarify every single item.
And, and if, um. Because ultimate enforcement would be, um. because ultimate enforcement would be, um, something I'd have to do. I, I have the burden to prove any kind of noise ordinance violation, um, with any prospective jurors. And if, if there are so many individuals that are reading this differently, um, if the council wants to include clarifying language, that just after that semicolon, snow removal activity does not include snow removal equipment preparation. I think that would.
That re- that remains my, my, my motion then that including semicolon and whatever legalese you want to include that is more clarifying about the preparation.
And that's, that's all I'm, yeah, I think that's all, all of us are looking for is just that the attorney feels comfortable with the language that she can substantiate their concerns and and back it up. So if that's the language we need.
I think that little bit of language adds.
And the burden of proof is correct. Yeah, you know, something that the attorney has to deal with anyway. So.
Otherwise, somebody could just challenge the complaint and it could be thrown out.
So there's my motion.
Okay, I don't have a second yet.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. The motion would be to add those, that phrase.
The semicolon.
After the semicolon, clarifying that. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed?
Nay. I think that's just gonna create a whole bunch of new questions. People are gonna ask about, well, what about this?
Fair enough, but at least we tried to clarify. So that we will move on to item number four, proposed resolution twenty twenty-three dash oh nine, authorizing the mayor to execute an amendment to Robinson Waste Garbage Hauling Contract. Jordan, I believe you wanted to start on this one.
Uh, no, I don't think I did. I mean, it's, if, if, if we want to have garbage hauling, I, I, I don't think we have much of a choice. I'd rather get Steve's synopsis. And, and then, um, I will.
Well, we talked about it in the last meeting, so it is the same as we talked about it in the work session.
Yeah.
I, I.
Inflation.
In- inflation happens and it's becomes more expensive, but I, I don't like it.
I guess the one question I have is, um, is it pretty standard to have like a CPI inflator in all of these contracts? Is that just kind of standard practice with them?
It is.
Cause I think if that's not negotiable or debatable, then I don't know that we have a whole lot of, you know what I mean? It just feels like that's, that's the world we live in and.
We went for about five years with no changes and then suddenly we've got one every year. So it is inflation. That's what it's related to. But, yeah. So I need a motion if you're, you're comfortable with this.
There's, there's nothing new. I assume we're all.
There is nothing new.
Yeah, I, I move that we, uh, oh, do we need to hold a public hearing or we?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yes, it's money. So I will open this to public. No, this is, this is not. That's the next.
Five. Fee schedule.
Okay, so I move that we.
We're all over the board.
That we approved, uh, we approve resolution R twenty-three oh nine.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. The next is a public hearing. This is for proposed resolution R twenty-three dash ten, updating and amending the city's consolidated fee schedule by making adjustments throughout. And there are no new ones, I understand, Steve, but if you'd like to speak to this, I'll.
There is one clarification, um, with the question park rental fee. That has not been broken out in the past. We just assumed it's a park rental. Cresta wanted clarification for that broken out. So that's the same fee that we charge for a park rental. It's just now requested to be a separate line item in the fee schedule. The other three items we discussed previously. If you want me to go into it, I, I can.
That's up to you. I, I mean, it's what we discussed previously. So if you don't need to hear it, that's fine.
Oh, we talked about it.
Okay, I'll take a motion.
Need a public hearing.
Oh, I'll open this public hearing. Seeing no one but staff.
What a day.
Okay. I will close public hearing. And now I will, uh, call for, there was a motion? Did I miss that? Okay, then I need a motion.
I move that we approve resolution R twenty-three, updating and amending the Syracuse City Consolidated Fee Schedule.
Sorry, it was R twenty-three ten, correct?
Yes.
Sorry, uh, ten, R twenty-three ten.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next is a public hearing request for fee waiver from, uh, Davis North Communities That Care Coalition. Brody?
Okay, we discussed this a little bit at the work session. Um, I just want to clarify the official ask from the CTC is for a room rental waiver, fee waiver, um, at the community center. Uh, they meet, uh, every other month, so it'd be a total of six, uh, waivers. Um, now the, the council has different options here. So you've already adopted a policy where nonprofits can get an automatic fifty percent waiver, um, without coming to you. Um, however, if they want a full waiver, we have to do this hearing. So that's what, that's what they're asking. Um, regardless of whether you grant the waivers or not, there are some other conditions that they'll have to follow. Uh, one of them is we can rescind the waiver, like if they're not cleaning up after themselves and things like that in the room. Um, they will have to, uh, still make a deposit and then it gets returned to them. It's like a cleaning deposit. Um, and we can either do that each time or hold it till the end of the year and then give it back to them. Um, and then finally, uh, typically, just so they know, um, we will, we will schedule them within the next six months. There was an actual provision in the policy adopted that we won't schedule anything beyond six months, um, so that rooms can be available, uh, during the time and day that they, they want. But within the next six months, we can, we can all, uh, reserve all of those. So that'd be like three meetings maybe. So. Uh, so before you tonight is just the, the vote on whether to approve the fee waiver request or not.
Okay, so I'm gonna thank you for that, uh, clarity. Now I'm gonna open this up to public hearing. Seeing done, I will close public hearing. Counsel, I need a motion or discussion.
I move that we approve the request for the fee waiver from North Davis Communities That Care Coalition. Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number seven, proposed resolution R twenty-three dash eleven, informing the city is Syracuse City Council review of twenty twenty-two Municipal Waste Planning Program annual self-assessment. Robert?
Yes. State code requires that we submit an annual report describing the health of our sewer system over the past year. And the year is January to December. So twenty twenty-two, this is our annual report to them. Uh, one of the requirements in the report is that we present it to the city council for your review.
Okay, so you've seen this in the packet.
Uh huh.
Any questions on the self-assessment?
I have one.
Go ahead.
Where is this biggest pipe we've laid in nineteen eighty-nine? I was just curious.
Where is?
Yeah. It said, what's the, when have you laid your largest diameter pipe and in what year, I believe was the question?
No, it was ninety-eight.
Ninety-eight.
Isn't that the pipe that goes down through that?
Robert, I have less concern.
I couldn't tell you exactly where it's at, Jordan, tonight, but, uh, most likely it's, uh, a long antelope.
You could say it with a silver.
I want to say awesome job. It's so nice to know that every time there's an assessment of any kind, there's not going to be anything that we think, oh my gosh, how did that get passed? As you check every, every T is crossed, every I is dotted, and it's so nice to have such amazing staff.
I enjoyed all of the zeros.
Can I get a flooding motion from somebody?
I move.
Or find if you wanna.
I move that we affirm the proposed resolution R twenty-three eleven for Syracuse City Council's review of the municipal wastewater planning program assessment, annual assessment for twenty twenty-two.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. The next item is just a discussion. Um, this is discussion provide, or providing some direction to, uh, on the blessing box proposal. I felt like this was not completely resolved, whether we were in favor, not in favor. And Jennifer, you wanted to begin on this.
So I met with Ms. Brooklyn and Detective Beam and as well as Ms. Cresta, and we walked all over over here to figure out where the best place to put a blessing box would be. And one of the big things is the vandalism that happens over there is like pretty rampant in that whole general park area. So between the four of our brains, the, the place that we decided was probably the best would be right next to, at the police department where they have the exchange parking spots for parents who are exchanging for parent time. Because it is on video camera and it's kind of, uh, people will be using that area anyways for parental things. So um, out of all the places that we looked, that was the most not likely to be vandalized.
So I, I'm gonna say that I agree with you that that's probably a great place. The other question that I think is yet to be resolved is what does this look like and who maintains it and how is it managed?
Okay, so it's, I, I don't know if you guys have seen like a small little library that are in like neighborhoods. They're kind of about that size, usually hmm, two feet by three feet, like foot and a half deep is what we've kind of planned for. And it'll look like a little barn with a see-through front door. And citizens put like, uh, supplies, food, things like that in it and people who need it stop and.
I think Roy's city has one and.
They've got like three.
Community page. People just post like, hey, just put stuff in the blessing box or.
Yeah.
Stuff if anybody needs anything.
And, and to be clear, it was, Roy originally had a very small one. And it is now, um, one of those, I, I'll, I'll call it.
Like a phone booth?
No, no, it's, it's actually.
Closet.
Whole.
Blessing closet.
It's like a blessing closet. Like it, there was such a demand and need for it that it actually grew into, um, like one of those lifetime closet shed type things.
So my concern would be, is that appropriate in front of the police station?
Well, we're not putting a closet. So first things first, it's got, it would look like a little barn and it wouldn't take up too much space to block the camera or anything like that. It.
How big is it?
It'd be probably about like a, about two feet by three feet by about a foot and a half deep, like a little.
Make them as big.
Yeah. You can make them bigger, small, but that's about an appropriate size for two shelves in it.
So without assumption, because I think I have an idea, but without the assumption of where this comes from.
Oh, I'm building it.
Okay, that's, wanted to clarify.
The box, yeah. I'm built, Brooklyn and I are building it together, actually. No.
Okay.
But thank you.
Yeah, anytime.
I might accidentally saw it off. We'd have to call.
Is everybody else on the council okay with this as proposed?
So, um, the feedback, so I did take it to CTC and they don't do these things, right? This is not really something that they, um, manage. The feedback they've gotten from their community partners that they have worked with has been that, um, that the effort might be better served to work with like the school pantries and the school like resource rooms that are kind of being put in and there's been legislation this year to really beef up that effort. But that might just be coming from the fact that they don't do these, right? This is.
Yeah.
This is not within their purview. The idea that we brought forward was just that National Take Back Day, that is the Big Brothers, Big Sisters thing that's, that's gonna happen to Godless and, yeah. So that's just more of a clothing and cloth material, uh, donation effort. That's just a one-time, ten to two, uh, thing. Um, but yeah, so they weren't experts in it. You know, they, they kind of advised against it, but more based on, I don't know if it was lack of experience or.
They're kind of, the blessing boxes are there to kind of just take up the extra slack from weekends and days the schools are closed and things like that, because most schools have a food pantry type thing within the schools. But the schools aren't always open.
True.
I think it's a great idea.
So who, who does the, um, maintenance? So you're building?
So it's, it's the Syracuse page. I, I don't want to say this the wrong way. They're Miss Syracuse. This is, this is kind of her, her thing. She brought it to Jordan and I actually. And most cities around us actually have them. I think Kaysville has a couple too. And they're usually in neighborhoods, like people put them in their yards. So the neighborhood, if they need it, can use it. Um, as far as it being maintained, I think if it ends up getting vandalized, it's the only time it would need to be like maintained for the way it looks or if it's something happens to it. And that's the whole point of putting it at the PD. I don't suppose someone's really gonna go out there in front of the PD, just like break the door off or something, you know? And I'll check on it, make sure it's okay, put the door back on.
I think it's a great idea. I, I think maybe we just take a look at it in a few months and see if it's been used. Like, can we have any way that we can?
So first, we need to make sure we can do it. Cause I'm not putting all this effort into building it and getting it put in and you guys be like, oh, we didn't want that. So.
I vote no.
Seth?
All right.
No, I, I can support that. I think it's.
I think it's a good idea.
Good idea.
Okay, so it looks like the consensus, this is not a voting item. So I'm just gonna move it forward with the general consensus that we've agreed to give it a try and do your best.
One thing I do want to say that I, I would also request for, um, that we put an article in the magazine as well as.
And you're gonna write it.
I'm sure Brooklyn will have all that covered. They got all that media.
But I, I do want to try, as a city, I do want to push this, on this just a little bit, be it on our Facebook page and things like that, to just promote that this is out there and.
Yeah.
That it's, because first of all, we want people to put stuff in it. But second of all, if someone needs it, we want to know.
All right, with that resolved.
We also would need to, and I think we talked about this before. I don't know if this is still a, a welcome comp, uh, you know, complimentary discussion, but, um, we do need to promote the, the Big Brothers, Big Sisters Take Back.
I think that's.
Like the prescription and the, um, clothing take back.
Hey.
Don't mix up the bins.
All right, I feel like we're kind of getting into council announcements or requests at this point. So let's move on. Um, the next item we have is public comment. If we have any public that would like to address the council, um, I open that public comment.
Uh, this is the last time you guys are gonna see me in here, but the, the way I still read it, adding the verbiage, I still question it. It's, to me, it's still too vague. Snow removal activities is activities involved with snow removal. If you tell every company, which I counted twelve landscapers in Syracuse, that they cannot do snow removal legally here. All that business is gone. Now you're bringing business from outside the city limits to take care of the snow. And we can't even service any buildings here or businesses because they're not gonna wait till seven in the morning for us to engage in snow removal activities. They're gonna just hire somebody else, let alone all the lawsuits that we had been involved with since we're under contract with these. So I'm gonna continue to run my business the way that I have been the last twenty-one years. I've been at that property for seven years. Two weeks ago, the cops have been called twice. That's the only complaints I've ever had. And obviously we've worn our, our welcome with the, the neighbors around me and well, we're gonna start looking to move, but I'm gonna engage and then we'll just take it up in court if it gets that. I hope that it doesn't. We do our best to try to be quiet. I don't know if we need to do like decibel levels. I can get different equipment, so there is no noise with that. I think by law, our trucks can idle the warm-up to take off. So I guess I just need clarification. I, I know this isn't the place to do that or the time, but I don't know if it's a uh, code enforcement, but I gotta figure that part out, cause I still interpret it different than, than the attorney. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Okay, Jennifer, would you like to begin with council announcements?
Start with.
Okay. Paul, would you like to start?
I don't have any announcements.
Hey, Seth?
Um, so the update from CTC after we, we discussed this last time was that, uh, they can hold, um, the requested courses. They can hold them quarterly and they will provide, um, the staff and the materials and all that. We just obviously need to provide a space for it, which will lead to the same discussions we've been having. Um, I would say we probably need to, you know, target, um, starting in May and then, you know, going quarterly from there. So we can kind of do some sort of mental health month kickoff of that effort, um, and then hold it in an ongoing fashion. Um, they recommended holding at least two of those to start and then just see what the appetite is for that. If it's like something you hold quarterly or biannually or just even annually. Um, and, uh, that's that, uh, QPR training. So I think it's a really good first step in that direction. So, and, and they want to do it. So it's great.
Okay, we have two ribbon cuttings this Friday and Saturday. One's in Syracuse. What, this is with the West Davis Chamber. So one's in West Point and then one is in Syracuse. In fact, let me just pull that up in case anybody wants to be there. It's for, um, a bike shop, right?
They're fun.
Yeah, so that's at, uh, I believe it starts at, the ribbon cutting's at ten, if anybody wants to be there a little bit earlier for that. Just on seventeen hundred. Um, did the great handshake thing at Syracuse Elementary. There's some awesome kids there. They have good firm handshakes.
Mostly.
Uh, most, not all of them, but some. And I had a new grandbaby, so that was worthy of mentioning.
Okay, Jordan?
All right, so I, I just need to do a shout out for the Syracuse Orchestra.
All right, so I I just need to do a shout out for the Syracuse Orchestra. I now know what a didgeridoo is. I didn't before.
Okay.
Uh, but a great concert. They did a phenomenal job. Um, I, they just do great. I I, they are such an asset to our community. So grateful to them. Um, beyond that, I don't have, but oh, there is one other item. Um, I actually had someone reach out to me and to inform me that, um, our, so I I don't know how many people know that our our Allabilly's Playground, uh, named Chloe's Playground, Chloe has passed away. Um, and they wanted me just to just mention that and and we're grateful for her positive outlook and for what she kind of helped uh, push forward in this community. We need more people that are willing to step up and really push to make in a, uh, the city and the world a better place. And so we, Chloe will be sorely missed.
Okay.
I like that.
That's very sad to follow up. Um, I did the day in the life at the junior high just recently, right before we did the handshake thing. And we were, I was in charge of the pet store. Hmm. So that was fun. I didn't know that they did that at the junior high and I think maybe we should put some more people over there when they do that. They could use extra help over there. Did a ride along with, uh, officer call through the gymnasium and gave kids tickets who were running. That was fun. Um, and besides that, I just had to gather my thoughts just a minute ago. I apologize. Uh, it's still daylight, folks.
Awesome. We can just keep it this way.
Did you have any comments, Brody?
Uh, no manager's report will be coming out either tonight or tomorrow morning. Um, but I just want to let you know that the the position for the public information specialist is advertised and so we'll be getting, uh, interviews later this month.
So I have one comment. Sewer Board met last week and, um, to update you all the process that in all these years we have never had, but we finally did. So um, I was unaware of this and so was everybody else. But we had an application to, um, annex property into the sewers on that. So to let you know that they have a map of what's approved for them to service and anything outside of that map would first have to go through their annexation before they could go through uh, an application process. That was new to me. We had a first one at West Point. They have an area that is considered non-s sewer, uh, possible. And so to do that, they would have to first be annexed in and it would be on the condition that the city bear the burdens of that. So just to let you know that that's a process that's ongoing and is not a short annexation process. We did a member memo of understanding first. And then they have to follow it certain steps. So if that were to come in our city, we would need to defer to that process. Okay, other than that, I will take a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.